This is the May 15th, 2025 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped and we do have a quorum. First, I'd like to recognize our newest member, Eileen Wilma-Garet. She was elected by the town to serve on the library board, so welcome.
Thank you.
And we look forward to having you on the board.
Thanks so much.
Our first item of business today is the minutes, the secretary's report from April 11th. Does anyone have any clarifications or questions on those minutes? Okay.
I have the motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, we're gonna do a roll call vote, cuz Eileen wasn't at that meeting. So Nancy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
And myself, as an aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the budgets.
Budgets, so let's start off with salaries. I can't believe this, but there's only four pay periods left in this fiscal year. So our director and patron services supervisor are where we should be for spending. So there's a little weather room, in library technicians, internal room assistant. So I'm using that to cover staff vacations, personal days, and sicknesses. And let's jump into operating. So for the energy line, I have received the energy bills through March. So I have not received April's yet. So we are entering that period where bills are slightly significantly less. So for example, the jump, so February to March, the bill was down $400. And building in grounds, proficient quarterly plan came out in April, so that was deducted. They actually came here last week to do their scan. And we are caught up with the building in grounds, just... I'll explain more on the building in grounds when I get to the walkway under new business. So for office supplies, I had to purchase the barcodes that we place on books, so when they get cataloged, they can be entered into the system. And just miscellaneous items of toilet paper, some materials for summer reading, meaning cardstock was used in the office supply line. And then our materials, like I said in the last meeting, I maxed out that line. I will say, I recently had two invoices created for Hoopla and Overdrive. So those were both signed by Jen because they're over $1,000. And I am happy to announce that I will have the 16% spent on materials this year.
Yeah, good.
So it won't be a panic of like last year. So as you know, I order books in advance. I don't get them until maybe a week before or after their release date. So we still are getting bills or invoices for materials. It's just I don't get them until the books get released, but they have been ordered. So that will definitely raise the 16% of materials spent. And I did, you know, e-resources or ebooks, e-autobooks are becoming very, very, very popular. So I feel comfortable putting in higher amounts into that than normal because the statistics are there, especially for audiobooks. And that's it for the budget. Any questions? We're almost at the end of this FY and next year will be interesting to see. But any questions and anything needs to be clarified there?
Nope, it looks good. It looks good. The energy is definitely less than we expected it to be, so that's good.
Yes, so last year there was that, right as we were going to budget negotiations, or budget talks for FY 25, the rate that the town was receiving for energy went up. The contract that they had with whoever it was. But I will say that, you know, it is pretty high, but it's not the astronomical high that we saw that one and two times when that contract ended. So I do believe they renegotiated with someone, but I don't know.
That's good.
Who.
Either way, it's less, so that's a good thing.
Yes.
All right, do you have no other questions or comments on the budget? All right, can we get a motion?
We accept the budget. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Old business. We have an update regarding the federal cuts to the Institute of Museum and Library Services, so IMLS.
So I am just gonna read what the MBLC, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, they send us emails weekly with updates regarding the IMLS. And as of recent, the firing of Carla Hayden, who was the librarian of Congress. She was fired, and I just wanna read a paragraph that was in the email that I think is important. "Dr. Hayden's abrupt termination is a stark reminder that our freedom, including our freedom to read, is being challenged across the country. Here at home, we need to continue efforts to pass legislation that protects that right and protects the library and to ensure, who work to ensure that all voices are part of library collections." I just wanted to highlight that, let it sit. Because this is, it's a scary time, I'm not gonna lie, as a librarian in a public setting, it's scary. And in terms of the IMLS, there has been some good news. A federal judge granted preliminary injunction halting the further dismantle of the IMLS. So there are two separate lawsuits, and this one is slowing down, or at least putting pressure on, you know, saying that this is unlawful. But there at least is a temporary restraining order to block the dismantle of IMLS, and that's where that stands. But with that being said, the MBLC, who receives federal funding for programs, education purposes, the Comcast, which is a database we use to get items outside of the sales network, Fremont Grex that they use for libraries, that they're facing difficult decisions. And that what they are going to do is that they cannot sign contracts and move ahead with services for FY 2026. So there's a lot of uncertainty when the new fiscal year happens. I hope, you know, our biggest concerns that we will see affect is if Comcast is taken away from us because we are small library, we rely on borrowing from other places. Just last month, we used Comcast 12 times to request 12 items to come to our library from outside the sales network. And then the other thing that we would see is the databases. So there are databases that anyone could use on our webpage that are funded through, that are federally funded, and they're run through the MBLC. Last meeting, I mentioned that the statistics, this is the first time I ever saw statistics for it. It jumped from a few, like 200 hits to 1,000 hits within September till March. I thought maybe it could be the schools using the databases, or we did have a quick Q and A for homeschoolers at the library and that databases were mentioned. So it could just be people are using it now because they're aware of it. So I just wanted to, you know, bring that to the forefront of this. And, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty. So hopefully, next meeting, I have better news to report, but it's something we have to unfortunately, you know, prepare for. But we have to take it day by day. Any questions about the MBLC or IMLS?
Does that person get replaced with someone else, or is this just a big?
I believe there was talks of somebody, so President Trump was hiring some attorney that worked with him.
There wasn't a mention, and I don't know who it was.
But I don't know after that. So it's ongoing and it's, yeah.
Well, thank you for
You're welcome.
giving us the update and, you know, letting us know what, how it, you know, may affect us here.
Yes, yes, so, you know, a lot of patrons, you know, they're not aware of Comcast. Comcast is a big thing here, so some patrons do use it. And, you know, when someone gives me a title and I cannot find it, I'm like, well, I can try Comcast. And they're like, what's Comcast? I'm like, oh, it's this wonderful catalog that is run through, that's done through the state, and you can get materials outside of the sales network. And you can even do it at home, you know, you don't have to come to the library to use it. So it's, especially for us being a small library, it's so good for us, you know. And for it to cease, I don't wanna think about it, but it would hurt us. It would hurt patrons and, you know, it's, you're restricting access to, you know, materials.
Possessing.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much for that update. We're gonna move on to the FY 26 budget.
All right, so I met, I had a meeting with Jamie on April 25th, and I was asked to cut some of our budget. So the only thing that I thought I could see some wiggle room in was the energy line. So I went ahead and cut $1,450 from the energy line. So the energy line now sits at $15,130. So the new FY 26 ask would be 305, 620. And that's it. I haven't heard anything. I know the Selectment are meeting, the Finance Committee have been meeting. So that's where I am right now, that's the new number. And then
And then just to make mention, that's still above the mark.
Correct.
Our mark is $303,078, so that would put us over.
Yes, so a difference of $2,542. So we are above, and that's where we want to be.
Okay. Perfect.
Any questions on the new proposed budget for FY 26?
And since the bills have been less for energy, then I assume that you feel comfortable?
I do feel comfortable, yes, yes. As long as whatever rate they negotiated remains, I do feel comfortable with it.
Okay, yep. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I think just be careful cuz now our buffer is only $2,000.
Yes, yes.
As the year goes on, we have to be careful.
Mm-hmm.
I'll work with the mark.
Yep.
Okay.
So, you know, this will is, you know, I won't know for sure until town meeting, but that's where we are right now. And they are meeting, and I believe the Selectmen are meeting tomorrow again. And I do watch the Finance Committee meetings and the Selectmen meetings just to see if there's any updates and any other valuable information pertaining to the library, or the town in general too. It's always good to know.
Absolutely.
So any questions or anything?
Can we get a motion to accept the budget?
We have the motion to accept the budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. New business. We have the library participating in the senior work-off program.
Yes, so this was mentioned, it was brought to me by Ellen and Lauren at the Council on Aging. So back in December, Ellen met with Lauren to discuss the senior work-off program. And Lauren reached out to me recently to see if we were still interested because now it's not winter and, you know, things have been growing. You can see it's already starting with the weeds. So the senior work-off program is a program that those who qualify, work for the town, so to say, to work off their tax, or some type of tax. So what I am proposing is to actually participate in this program. There is a gentleman who reached out to Lauren who, I believe, worked or worked at the golf course. Who, so they do have a background with landscaping, so to say. And they were still interested in potentially helping us. So I gathered all the information on the senior program. So they, so whoever gets, so this person would have to go through a quarry screening. And then they also have to fill out a town employment application plus the applications regarding the senior work-off program. So it's formal. It's not, you're not pulling someone off the street and saying, hey, can you do this and so forth. So it's, they're being screened, it's a formal process. One thing to note is that the money does not come from the department's budget at all. This is strictly, they work it up, they, so to say, work towards their taxes. I walked around the property, went in the sheds because I'm like, okay, so if we do have this person come in and work, what do I have here? Well, I have a lot more than I realized. So in one of the sheds, there are ton of landscaping tools. I don't think I've ever been in the last shed on our property because I was told it had lawn mowers. I'm like, why am I gonna go look at a lawnmower? So there are ton of landscaping tools. Clippers is two types of clippers, there's rakes, there's shovels, there's barrels, there's all kinds of stuff. Weed whacker, but I don't even know if that works cuz I don't know how to operate that, and I'm not going to. So we have the equipment. So this person, I was thinking if they're available to work either like on Fridays before we open. So depending on their schedule, I mean, this might not work, but the best bet would be before, you know, 9:00 to 12:00 or 9:00 to 11:00. It just depends on how much work is out there, like I don't know. But it is a work in progress. It would be something I would speak with whoever gets hired, you know. And they also could come in, you know, Rick's here at 8:00, so if they wanted to come in and start doing the hedges at 8:00, we don't open till 10:30. That's also an option. So I would work with this person, I would sign off on their time sheets. And they would just come in and, you know, help us out, help our flower beds look decent.
So is the idea, is the idea for you to want them to be here when the library is not open? Is that what the, or does it, they're not, cuz they're not coming in the library per se?
They, I mean, I, we want, somebody has to be in the library. So either Rick, cuz they would need the key to the shed.
Okay, got it.
I mean, they could even work when we are open. It's not disturbing anyone. It's just, you know, for ease of, maybe comfort for them. You know, if they're patrons in and out on the walkway, you know, if they were not open yet, the only person who's using the walkway is most likely the mail person delivering the mail or delivery. So I'm just, I'm just asking if I'm, if the trustees would allow me to pursue this.
Oh, absolutely. I just didn't know if you were just thinking that they were gonna be working, like, you know, like if their schedule doesn't allow them to work on Friday morning or So as long as it's
As long as it's okay, whatever, I will work with them, but I'm throwing that off as ideal. You know, as Fridays, I'm here, you know, from 9:00 to 1:00, right out there.
And there's no one here, right, right, right.
But if they can't do it, then
Or if it rains.
Yeah.
Like, you know, you're having to have every Saturday raining right now, so.
The first time they come here, obviously, I mean, it depends on if they get tired, you know. I don't know how many hours they're expected to work, but I will work with them. There's no restriction that I have to, they have to work, you know, in three-hour shifts or whatnot.
Yeah, okay.
So I just want, before we proceed with this and this get, the applications get sent and this, I mean, I think they might even be working elsewhere at this point in town. But on the application, it says where you would like to work. But the library's not listed, but it says other, so they can just go ahead and fill in library. And
Is it one person that we can have right now?
It's one person right now. I only have one name. I mean, if there are interests, you know, I mean, if we open this door, there might be other people. I mean, obviously, the first cleanup will be the most work, but as long as it's up to cap, like every month, every month, every other week, I don't know. It depends on this person and
And just for clarification, just for the people out there or anybody that's watching, we're looking for the senior work-off program for people to work on the landscaping outside the library. Nothing inside the library. We don't, unfortunately, we don't have any volunteer opportunities or work-off opportunities inside the library because those, we have the staff here for that. So there's nothing
It's external, mainly the flower beds under the sign, around the trees. We don't really have any vegetation in the back that gets mowed. The sign here, which is just the front of the building. So it's just upkeeping of flower beds, weeds and
I just wanna make sure that we are not getting
No, unfortunately, we can't have that.
50 applications because Not that we would never, but
Which I appreciate.
Right, but so unfortunately, we can't. So it's just for the landscaping. So I think it's a great idea. What does everybody else?
It makes sense to do it when it's not open. You don't want kitchen machines.
Yes, I mean, I don't have any machines. I only have I
Plus, at least then, you'll be able to work with them to say, hey, listen, you know, this first week, it may be 10 hours I need to be here, but then every week after that, they only need to be like two. And you're gonna get to a certain point that by the time we get to like the fall, it's gonna be the fall cleanup and then
Then that's it.
See you in the spring or whatever.
So it is seasonal.
Right, but But still, I think it's, I think it's
It's a solution to the issue I've been having for almost two years this June, you know, regarding the flower beds. It's a solution. I'm willing to try it. And, you know, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, you know, I mean, no harm to follow and
And I think someone that's, that's, you know, used to landscaping, you know, I mean, that's, it's just, I'm in the area of expertise today, so.
Yes, it is.
That's great.
Yes.
Can we, does anyone else have any questions or anything on it? If not, can we just get a motion?
I move that we look into hiring some from the senior work-off program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I will immediately after this meeting, I'll reach out to Lauren. And I can understand she's waiting for an answer, and we'll start this process.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have a donation from the Acushnet Lions Club.
So the Acushnet Lions Club donated $2,000 to our summer reading, oh, our summer concert, sorry, our summer concert series. They have been donors in the past. You know, it's amazing. So I just need to have it accepted from the trustees.
Okay.
A formal.
Make a motion towards the $2,000 from the Lions Club.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just wanna take a minute to thank the Acushnet Lions Club for that donation to the summer concert series. As everyone knows, it's hugely popular, and, you know, it is greatly appreciated. So thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, we have the resealing of the walkway.
So last summer, we had a patron come up to us. And I, also, before I even start, I tried, I looked at a meeting minutes and I didn't see that I had it discussed on camera. So if I'm repeating myself, sorry. So we had a patron come up to us last, during one of the concerts. And they said, hey, I did the walkway when you guys moved here. It needs to be sealed, desperately needs to be sealed. I'm like, oh, 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 oh. So they gave me their contact information. He said he would do the labor, everything for free, I just have to purchase the supplies. So time goes on and couldn't do it in the fall cuz of the weather. So he's like, well, do it in the spring. So I texted, and he is interested in doing it. But the issue with it is the seal that he uses used to be purchased at Beacon Hardware. Beacon Hardware no longer exists, they closed down. So the, I reached out to Matt to see if he could find the seallet. I also spoke to Matt if they, like, if I should go through them, like the town, to do it, or should I just have the gentleman who did it originally? Matt didn't feel too comfortable about it, but he was willing to do it. Because if this guy does it for a living, like, you know, no brainer. But my concern is getting an invoice for this. It's difficult if we don't have an established account, if the town doesn't have an established account somewhere. So Matt has been on the hunt for the seallet. I had emailed last night saying he had one more place to look, but they haven't been able to find it. So I am asking if I could, although I don't have a definite answer of where the seallet will come, I'm asking if I would be allowed to. And I also had a, I'm changing my thought. I know I spoke to you about using the stock gift fund, but I haven't used a revolving fund this year. So there is a revolving fund that our fines and fees go into. So I'm asking if, when, I don't believe the seallet would be more than, and I might be exaggerating this, more than $400. So I'm asking if, when I do get a quote on the seallet, if I could go ahead and proceed to purchase the seallet so that we, the walkway could get done sooner rather than later because it's weather dependent. So it could be very hot come June, the next time we meet, and then I have to wait again for cooler weather. And then there's also the issue, if they can't find it, then I have to revisit this and see if they could use something else. But I don't have, I don't know. I don't really care about stealing.
Right.
So it's
How much is in the revolving fund?
Just go with the
Uh, right now, $3,000.
$3,000 is in the revolving fund.
Makes sense.
Sometimes I forget, like, wait a minute. Cuz I haven't used, I haven't, you know, I put the deposits in there, but I'm like, oh, oh, okay. So, um, so yes, that's what I'm asking, is if I'm allowed to purchase this and have it done sooner than later. I just didn't wanna wait till the next meeting, although I don't have a definite answer. But I'm assuming if they can't find this seallet that this gentleman wants, that there has to be other options out there. So, you know, he's willing to do it, you know, labor-free cuz he did it the first time. He just, and he will also, I will probably, I will have to come in when he wants to do it because it will be done, he has to power wash, and then he doesn't need building access on the following day. He just, whatever they do.
Right.
And it dries in 30 minutes, so I just have to be on premise for it. But it does need to be done because I'm starting to notice the paint along the side, I think it's paint, I don't, is chipping on the bricks. And it, you know, it's a heated walkway, so when we do use it, it gets hot, it gets cold, it gets hot, it gets cold, and it just, you know, it's cracking in certain places, so.
Okay.
So, yes, that's the gist of it. So I wish I had more information, more solid, yes.
Has anyone reached out to him? Because if he's the person who does this for a living, and he, you can get that.
I have been speaking to him, yes.
I mean, he would know.
Oh, like, we had to get the He, well, so he said Rockies in Frigiven. They went to Rockies and they don't have it. So I can ask again to see if there's other places. Okay, yep.
At least if he's someone that
Yes, and actually, the town does have an account at Rockies now that, you think.
Right.
Motion to approve request.
Motion to approve request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that'll be, uh, up to four hundred dollars, so you'll be all set there.
Correct. Okay.
And then you just, you can just let us know when you come back, like, how much it is and what you did.
Sure thing. Sure thing.
Okay. Next item is, uh, our annual, uh, election of officers, um, as everybody knows, we had the town elections, so we have, you know, have, um, a whole new board here, and we just need to elect our chair and secretary. So we could start with the secretary. Do we have any nominations for secretary?
Do I nominate myself?
All eyes on the secretary.
Well, you can if you want to, or we can have anyone else nominate.
Okay, Nate, Jerry for secretary, since she's so incredibly awesome at this.
Oh, yeah.
And would anyone like to second that?
Second.
All right, and we have to do a roll call vote, so all in favor, Nancy?
Aye.
Eileen?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Myself is an aye. Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
And now for the chair.
Motion for Jen to be chair. Could she do her fine work?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Roll call vote, Nancy?
Senator Bente.
Eileen?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
And I do accept. Thank you. And now we have our standing committees, um, which I am proposing. So I will just go through and propose these, and then if we, anybody has any changes or exceptions to them, we can move forward from there. Um, our committee assignments are, um, John with facilities, so we'll keep that the same. Um, the finance, um, it will be Nancy and Alan. Um, I will be governance. Planning and personnel will be, um, Alan and Eileen. Um, Jerry will be, um, continuing to watch the, the, um, town board meetings for the finance committee and the selectmen. Um, Alan is going to continue with the snow and I will continue to be the spor, spokesperson for the board at any public meetings. Anyone have any comments or?
Can you run through that quickly a bit?
Yep, I sure can, um, John's gonna be facilities.
Mm-hmm.
Nancy and Alan is going to be finance or for the budget. Um, governance will be me. Um, Alan and Eileen will be planning and personnel. You will be the, um, reporting for the, um, the issues of watching the meetings for the finance and selectmen. Alan is for snow. And I'm the spokesperson for the board at any of the public meetings, yeah? Anyone have, anybody have any comments, questions, exceptions?
Can I read up on that somewhere besides everything else I've written, I've read?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yes, yes, you'll, you'll be good to go.
Okay.
Um, so if that's good, we just need a motion to.
Motion to accept the slate of.
Accept all that. Excellent, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right. I think that takes care of all the business, uh, so now we have the director's report.
All right, fun stuff. So, um, just to highlight some of the things that have happened over the past month. Um, so the, I've submitted all the trustee meeting minutes to the town clerk, so they should be all caught up to March twen, uh, two thousand twenty-five. That should all be online on the town's website. I had a sweet interaction, um, with Mr. Wilth. His, we got a donation in honor of his wife who passed away. He came in, I hand, uh, I wrote a note to him, sent it, um, through snail mail. He received it, he walked in and he wanted to see the titles, he was really appreciative. Um, he wasn't aware of who made the donation, but there wasn't any anonymous, um, on the donation form, so I let him know. And then he proceeded to take a picture of the book plate to send his children. So I, it was a really touching moment and I'm happy that he's happy with the book plate and what was done for his, his late life. Um, and, uh, under action items for the town, uh, there was a, a mandatory department head meeting that was held on May, um, second. Uh, so the new chairman of the selectmen, David Warner, um, met with everyone to discuss that he will be having open hours on Fridays, uh, for department heads, if they want to, uh, discuss anything with him. And then what they are potentially going to do at the selectmen's meeting is have department heads report at the selectmen's meetings. Uh, I just wanna preface, preface that I meet every month with the trustees. So, you know, if there are any questions that the public has, um, or if I miss something, when I do attend these meetings, that it will be here at our meetings, also on camera. Um, but it's a good way to actually, I don't, you know, we're so far from town hall, but it's a good way to actually make a presence, um, at town hall. And, um, there was a little snafu regarding the union contract, um, for those who were hired after the ratification regarding vacation. So those should have been, who were hired after, uh, July first, two thousand twenty-two, should have been recruiting vacation monthly. So that correction was made, it was a, a little bit of a, a, uh, a mess in terms of figuring out what people were, were receiving and the wording in the contract plot. They are currently in contract negotiations, so come July first, this could all just go away. Uh, but we're all caught up, we're all up to date, those who are affected by this, um, understand what, um, is going on. Um.
And just to be clear, it's how many people?
Four, just four people, yep.
Four people, okay, okay.
Just four. Um, I wanna say that we have received our second state aid payment that was deposited into a state aid account, um.
And do you know how much that was?
I know, it's, it's either, it's between sixteen and seventeen thousand.
Okay, no, exactly, that's fine.
You think I would write it, right? I just, but they may receive.
It's just that we don't know, so we don't, because.
No, no, and, and, I don't, I don't, the only way I see it gets deposited is on the reconciliation forms.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
I don't know who, um, but I, I can give you that now, correct.
Usually they send a letter, but I didn't get a letter for this one.
No, again, an email.
Yeah, I actually think about a letter for the first one, I don't, I didn't ever get a letter.
Okay. Well, the, the concern was that, was because it was right around the time of federally, um, DMS.
Right. Yes. The cuts and everything, yes, okay.
Yes, exactly, um. Before I get into, let's talk about buildings. So on April twenty-second, uh, I know I've mentioned this a few meetings ago, uh, we had some, a complaint about our handrail leading up to the deck. Uh, Matt and Brady fixed it, so it's not as wobbly, I mean, it's not stiff, but it has a little movement, but I do believe it needs, needs to have some movement, but it's secure, um, in the event that, um, you know, it was, there was a concern of someone grabbing it and, and falling. Um, they also, that day, that Saturday, I was, we had, uh, the poop museum in here and I had to shut the building off because we were passing two-thirty and that's gonna be closed. I broke the handle to the barn door. So I almost flew back anyway, so that day, so it was, it was very comical. So that day, uh, he also fixed it, I showed him, like, I did this, can you fix? So it was taken care of, so it's back on the door handle, but I'm not gonna put on my strength when I do need to close that door. Lesson learned. Um, we have resumed, uh, the mosquito squad spraying of our properties, that is funded by the Friends of the Acushnet Public Library, and I thank them for that. So they will spray from April to September. Um, Proficient, like I mentioned earlier, they were here to do their quarterly check. Um, I am happy to say that the traps didn't find anything, uh, in them, just some light feeding, whatever that is.
This what?
Light feeding.
It means like.
They're on diet.
They just nibbled, something was around there, but didn't get caught.
They just stood there.
But they didn't get caught.
They didn't.
That's what happened.
So, no. I was like reading the, like feeding, I'm like, is that just a bite and they run? So I did it, I don't know, it's just kind of funny. Um, so that's it for, um, oh, so also, when Proficient was here, they noticed, I, even I noticed that morning, there is now a giant, um, groundhog hole on the opposite side of where it was last year. So it's probably, yes, so it's probably about eight inches.
Groundhogs are located.
So that day, he, well, he was like, oh, you know, they could better, uh, you know, make tunnels and then the, the walkway will collapse, the deck will collapse, and I'm like, oh my god, crisis. So I, you know, I'm like, okay, so what should we do, is it fill it? If it gets dug up again, um, you know that they're there, we'll come, because it's part of our plan, they'll come with a trap and take care of it. I, but I, I don't, I don't wanna think about that point, because I, I don't wanna try it, um, 'cause I don't know what they meant by take care. But anyway, hopefully, they meant relocate it to the woods.
Yeah.
Somewhere away from property, but anyway.
That sounds.
So that day, I reached out to DPW to, hey, can you give me some dirt, or can you come fill this hole with some dirt? Um, they came yesterday to look at the hole, but with no dirt. So, um, I'm waiting, uh, if I don't hear again by tomorrow, I'm gonna call and say, hey, you guys were here, but where's the dirt?
Right.
Um, I mean, I could go out in the field and grab some, but.
Because we need some dirt.
We need some dirt, so a little groundhog friend, he was there last year, but he was living on the book drop side and he had a little hole and we would see him towards sunset, out in the fields on this side.
So was his original hole filled?
It collapsed.
Oh.
Yeah, it went like this and now it's covered in weeds, so it collapsed, but this one is right by the walkway, you'll see it and, um.
Well, I would probably mention to the senior work off person that we have a groundhog, um, because you, I mean, if, if, if they end up pulling the weeds, then we may uncover a hole.
I would. Yes. Or something, like, I don't know, like, under these bushes, there could be stuff under there, I'm not actively worried.
I would probably mention that when you talk to the senior work off person.
Okay. I mean, I know we have rabbits living under the shed.
Well, rabbits are one thing, but I mean, a groundhog just popping up out of the ground, it means maybe a little
He's adorable.
frightening, if you're weeding.
What are you doing now? So, um, that's our update with the groundhog, um, uh, regarding, so there was a sales membership meeting on April sixteenth. Um, the big thing that came out of that meeting, um, was that, so if you pay a fee, uh, with your credit card, so lost books, we don't do overdue fees, but if you go to another library, you might, um, when you use your credit card, you would have to pay eighty-five cents to use it. Starting, uh, July first, that fee's now going up to a dollar twenty-five. Um, I do receive, so if someone pays a book online with their credit card, uh, I do receive the check in the mail, um, and the list or what the title is. Uh, but it's not as often, maybe every other month or so, so, um, and plus, we don't have overdue fees, so.
Do many libraries still have that?
I think eighty percent of the network is fine for you, so, um, there are a few in the, I think New Buffett still does.
Okay.
But there are a few who, who still do have it. Um, so let me start with the summer reading, um, so starting May sixteenth through May thirtieth, we are doing the bookmark contest, so the third and fourth grade is, um, designed a bookmark for our summer reading program and the top, uh, ten in each grade, uh, were selected and then voting will begin on the sixteenth here in the library and there'll also be an online form, um, that you could click on and participants can vote on. And then what happens is the top three in each grade, um, they, we print the bookmarks and the people could come in and, and, um, grab those bookmarks. Um, so on topic of, of, you know, we're getting closer to summer, um, so I reached out to the Acushnet Public Schools, St. Francis, Old Colony and ORR, uh, for summer reading lists. I have received the summer reading list from the Acushnet Public Schools, uh, from grades one through five, so I'm missing six, seven and eight. And I've also received it from Old Colony. So, um, I'll start pulling those titles, uh, for summer reading. Uh, last year, I, we, I came up with a system of a color quoted, uh, color coded, uh, stickers corresponding with reading list and the book, so I might do that again, might change it, but, um, it's in the works, but I'm glad that I'm doing this sooner than June. Um.
That's good last year.
Yeah, and I, and I did receive a lot of compliments on it, um, it's just, my concern is that when you take books off the shelf, it, you know, if someone's taking a different book, it doesn't match up with the sticker on the bottom. So I'll have to rethink it or just leave it as it is. Um, so bookmarks, so, so I've received all our promotional materials for summer reading. Um, and then summer reading startups will start June sixteenth. Um, and then I'm just gonna highlight some of our upcoming programs. Um, so this Saturday, uh, the twelfth, we have a drop in craft starting at noon and they're making these beautiful, um, tissue paper flowers. There's some examples on the, on the circulation desk. Um, the Friends also this Saturday, May seventeenth, are doing a jewelry drop-off sale. So if you have jewelry that you're itching to get rid of, the Friends will accept it. And that is from ten to noon, and then what is going to happen with that jewelry, they'll do a jewelry sale during Apple Peach Festival. They had one last year for the first time and it was extremely successful. So this year, they're reaching out to the public, so if anyone wants to drop off jewelry, they'll be here to collect it. And then on Monday, uh, May nineteenth, the Ford Middle School Chorus will be here to perform their spring concert. And it should be outside, uh, weather permitting, if not, there is a rain date, which is that following Wednesday. And then our history coffee hour, which has taken off, um, is Thursday, uh, May twenty-second at eleven. Um, and that is, uh, it was a patron's idea, it has worked, this is gonna be the third month that they're doing it, so people bringing artifacts, or not artifacts, but archives, papers, materials, things, we bring out our books that we have, um, regarding Acushnet and people just talk about the, the past and, and it's well received, um, people just have, it's sort of informal, they just come in here and discuss things, it's really fun. Um, and then we have a concert, uh, with Judy and Barry De Rossi celebrating the timeless classics of American music on May twenty-eighth at six. And then we have a Saturday concert with Lewis and Ferry songs and stories of the American songwriters from nineteen sixty to nineteen seventy-five. And that's Saturday, June seventh at noon. So those are our upcoming, um, programs in addition to our regular programming, um, that we have. Um, so we are entering our busiest season, um, and we're almost set for summer reading, I'm still, um, booking programs, um, and we should be good to go come June sixteenth, any questions on the director's report?
Sounds like you're busy.
Yes, yes.
Very busy. Excellent job.
Thank you.
Um, we need to set the date for the next meeting. So how about?
I will say, I won't be here the eighteenth, um, of June, so, uh, I don't know yet, or the.
I was thinking the week before that.
Sure, yep, that's perfect.
If that's possible. Um, does anybody have a preference? Um, I could do, I could do Friday, June thirteenth, but I'd have to do it early. I could do Friday, June thirteenth, but I'd have to do it earlier, 'cause that's the last day of school, you can't do the thirteenth, okay, any other day other than that, that week, or is that week tough?
I can do it the twelfth, I can do it the eleventh.
Twelve.
I can't do eleven, I could do twelve.
The twelfth, okay, so how about we do Thursday, June twelfth at eleven-thirty, does that work for everybody? Okay, so we'll see, next meeting is Thursday, June twelfth at eleven-thirty. Okay, perfect. All right, do we have any other business that we want to talk about? Okay, then we just need a motion?
Make a motion to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned, it is twelve twenty-five, thank you.